That was sent in, but I mean, you know, we had to bring in guys to clean out. It was brand new mains and they plugged it up in less than three months. And so.
Yeah, they just. It was brand new sewer.
Yeah.
So I don't blame for being upset, but.
The time is four thirty P M. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of twenty five March twenty twenty five is called to order. I asked those in our council chambers if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, if you please do so before you leave. Also, I ask everyone to put their phones on vibrate. We'll call a member, Danielle.
Councilwoman Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Shelley Gummeringer.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markraff.
Here.
Councilmember Don Perrin.
Here.
Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. Fun to welcome each and every one of you here in our city council chambers this afternoon, also those joining us by Zoom. Uh, remember, our city council meetings are shown on the Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. I just have one announcement for the next couple of weeks. Our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, April eighth, four thirty P M. And here in the council chambers, was there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if you all please stand as a pledge of allegiance.
I am politically considered flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Uh, thank you. Item number three is, excuse me, item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments that is not on the agenda? You're seeing none. Item number three is additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. Make that item number sixteen, music in the park. One addition, item number sixteen, music in the park. Any other additions or deletions?
I'm hoping for the addition of music. Oh, second.
Motion second, discussion, 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 hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, please carry on. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four A is approval of council minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty five. Or B is approval accounts payable listings, before C is park board minutes, four. E is attempt to certify the taxes. Item number one is thirty three Northeast Third Avenue, partial number seventy six. Zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, one, six, two, zero, 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 amount of. Three hundred and seven dollars eighty six cents of unpaid utility bill. The second one is. Three, four Northwest Third Avenue, partial number seven, six, zero, zero, nine, nine, zero, one, zero, seven, zero, 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 amount due is. Three hundred and seven dollars sixty two cents unpaid utility bills. Item number three is. Forty seven Northwest Second Street, partial number seven, six, zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, three, seven, four, zero, zero. Zero, amount due, five hundred thirty one dollars and seventy three cents of unpaid utility. Bill's an item number four E is staff reports, which is. Four A one utility report from February, which is in the packet, and four D. E two is liquor store report, which is in the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carry on. Item number five, uh, we have Jerry Henry here from Jackson City, is that Jerry?
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, you can come and address the council regarding an easement, and I, I spoke to Jerry and I said. Our, we have to talk to our city attorney regarding this, and he was just going to resent, uh, his request.
Jerry, I did want to come up and, uh, well, reinstate my interest in gaining our, uh. Uh, easement reinstated on the end of my property. And, uh, I, I'm not going to take great deal of your time because previously, uh, you folks were. Gracious enough to let me explain everything. And we had a easement by necessity is what they call it. And we bought that property in nineteen, I went back to our records, by the way, nineteen ninety one. And long be old, I even had notes from at that time, Mary McDonald and, uh, Mr. Erickson. And they called me and asked me to come and relook at this land that they had a prop. Uh, I had turned it down, by the way, it would, uh, uh, would not work for us because. My building was landlocked with the city's property completely around it. They got brought me back. They said, we will give you, uh, easement in perpetuity forever. And they, and we had one stipulation, and that was I put in the driveways at each end to access it and get it. And which I did, by the way, and at the last meeting, I had encouraged all of the council members to go look at that. Since then, it's actually, uh, I found out how important this easement is now, and that's why I'm up here now. Uh, big semis could no longer turn and get in there. Many, two of them. Quit coming out to pick up our big buckets in that evening. And thank God, we had a. Ice loader at one time, and we could pull them out of the muck in that. And the new owners of that property. Put a big row of black dirt between the properties. And we lost our excess to get our trucks in there and that. Even, uh, FedEx. Has to go way to the end of the block in the park and then come in from that end. To get access to where our shipping department is. So we ran into some real. Uh, glitches is what we did, and I want to reiterate that. But I would like to see if it's possible that the promises that were originally given to us by the city. Uh, can be reinstated since nineteen ninety one up till, uh, you know. Uh, we ran into the problem with the easement a year ago. Uh, everything just went beautifully. Uh, trucks could get in and out, uh. Uh, we deep, uh, we did nothing that would hurt any of the other businesses in the industrial park. Uh, but we ended up hurting ourselves, uh, with this. So I'm asking if it can be reinstated in that. I do, uh, uh, I understand where your officers came from back in those. I've heard the, many of them, uh, older people in this town have told me too. You know, when you're putting in your first part, uh, uh, lots out there. They didn't know how to plot it out for an industrial park either. They called us in and we promised you this and this. And I was buying, uh, I was hoping they knew a lot more than what I knew about it, but it did go well for all these years. And, uh, they went, and they held up their part of the bargain so we could get in and out. So I'm asking it be reinstated so we can in that. And, uh, I've, I've been since notified to that I may be, uh. I should get with the planning commission. I didn't realize that, and I'll be more than happy to do that. If I can work with anyone in the planning commission. Did anyone have any questions for me at all?
Okay, okay, thank you, Jerry.
Yep, yep.
Let's jump down to item number eight, a resolution two zero two five dot zero nine, resolution adopting section three plans for HUD, which is in your packet. Uh, Jordan Grossman is going to address that, Jordan.
Good evening. This resolution goes along with the small cities. Development program, which we are anticipating launching soon. Um, as well as all of the residents and business owners are anticipating we launch soon. Uh, this is a res- a resolution that snuck up in the last week that needs to be accepted by the city. Do you have any questions on it?
Any questions for Jordan? Pretty straightforward. Looking for a motion to approve. So, second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, 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 hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's the same, motion carry on. Then we'll go down to item number, uh, sixteen, music in the park. Jordan.
E D A is looking to have our, our inaugural music in the park in Peterson Parks this summer. Uh, which entails six Thursdays, um, June through August. Where we would have, uh, musician, musicians come in from five thirty to seven thirty in Peterson Park. We would have local nonprofits serve as a food vendor and have some beverage options available. The E D A has a budget for this, so we're looking to spend up to four thousand dollars for music in the park this summer. And we'll do all of the advertising and working with musicians, contracts, et cetera. To have this be successful. Questions?
Yeah, we talked about this in our last E D A meeting, but move on to run it through the council so everybody's on board.
I did talk with Todd, Danielle, Brian, E D A recommendation, and sent a name out to the parks board today.
I'm okay with the conversation.
Yeah.
The, we had, we had begun discussions of. About reviewing the, the whole fencing regarding that, so we will have to, we'll have to address that before summer.
Right.
So.
I'd be happy to review those again.
We're looking for a motion to approve, uh, music in the park this summer.
I don't feel too good.
Well, second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back up to item number six, a league Minnesota cities collaboration services assessment report. We have Amy. Orley and Laura Panicure, and they will describe what they're going to report to us and then al- also give us their report, ladies.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, with me is former, he's the library director at the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. And I'm the collaboration services manager. Um, and we were here, uh, starting last fall on a project. Um, to help, uh, work with some disagreements about how to. The library and city council, library board and city council work together. That was put on pause, um, because there were staff changes. We wanted to come back and kind of close the loop and let you know, since people spent time with us, we talked to ten people. Uh, we spent some time, uh, trying to understand the situation, and there may be some things, some value. That can be added, um, although you have moved past that. And the first thing I want to say, this is more fun. Than a lot of the presentations I make because as a community, you did a great job. I know they're probably individuals and, you know, I'm not sure, I haven't been back to understand what all the feelings are. About what had happened last fall, but now we have new council members, some of you mainly not becoming a part of it. And in terms of being able to move forward as a community, some, some folks get really stuck, right, on this kind of thing, and you were able to. Honor, um, you know, the people involved and be able to move forward in really what feels like a very productive way, so. We're not here to tell you all the things you need to do to fix anything, uh, which is really fun for me, so thank you for this opportunity. Um, so, uh, if you weren't on the council, I will just, um, give you the highlights, uh, the scope of work, what we were. Asked to do was to clear, um, clarify roles and responsibilities between the council library board and library director. Uh, city administrator and staff. So what does that look like? Um, and one of the main issues was what does the complaints process look like? So if somebody feels those rules and responsibilities aren't being carried out, what would happen? Um, and then secondly, to look at what are the ways we could recommend to repair relationships and improve teamwork. Um, and so, uh, one thing I'll tell you about our office is we never comment, and my job is I'm a mediator facilitator for cities. As a part of the trust to help folks, um, uh, avoid the point where they have to even talk about loss and risk, right? Um, and so I don't, we don't tell people what to do. We're never here to decide who was right and wrong. We make no judgments about that. It's more about what are the things. That you could do to be able to move forward in the way that you want to, right? So it's not about a judgment, it's more about the process. Um, and so we spoke with, um, library directors, library employees, library board members. In council members, city administrators, city attorney, someone from the Viking library system. Just to get, the point is to get multiple different perspectives, um, to be able to understand sort of what's going on underneath it all. So a lot of times what looks like the problem, the presenting problem is the problem that you might want to worry about or think about as a city. Um, and those were by, but with everyone really positive, very positive. So I don't go into the details of it. Right? But just to say that, um, we heard from everyone in some way or fashion, while there might have been some stress and conflict. That being able to have a successful library, that the library was valued by the community. The quality proven programming was valued and that, um, improving relationships was something that was desired. Um, really came across, um, by all the people whom we spoke. Um, so what I'm going to tell you are the priority issues that came out. Now, this is not real scientific. I don't write it down in a report for you because. It's not, um, something where you could, like, it's a qualitative survey with, I don't know, scientists looking at or anything. It's just. In that moment of time, when we talk to people, uh, what did we hear? And this would be for your consideration. I understand from talking to your city administrator, some of these things may even be a messes, okay? So, uh, the top issues mentioned, so. That would be, um, in eight out of the ten interviews, something like this were mentioned, something to be considered, and so there are four things. Uh, one would be to establish community, communication expectations and norms. So what is the regular expected communication you might have as the city council, for example, from the library director? Does that person come once a year, twice a year, you know, how, is there a liaison? And, um, this, what happens is nobody was doing necessarily doing anything wrong before. Uh, but the unwritten rules for it and how it worked, when those start to get. Uh, people have different memories or understandings, right? It's a good idea to say, well, if you haven't written it down. Then write it down, and that way, then if things get difficult, you can point to say, okay, we all agree to this. And if it didn't work, then you change it, right? But it's having those guideposts and policies and procedures down, um, could be really helpful. Um, you might think about also the budgeting process. That's a place where between library boards and city councils, it's important to have a lot of communication, and what does that look like for you? Um, to think about, and then the third area would be, um, what are the expectations for the city administrator and the library director? Um, to be on the same page for staffing issues and that kind of thing. Um, the second one, um, that came up would be if there are concerns about. Um, particularly in this case was library director, but I would say it was, um, something that could be more broadly stated, if there are concerns by staff. What is a complaint process that preserves their confidentiality? Um, that, um, respects the person's rights who are being complained about, that kind of thing. So just what does that look like? Um, and it, making clear that whatever the city's policies are and figuring out how that works, you have a second library. You know, it's just a matter of, you know, writing it down and then making sure that everybody understands, if you haven't already. Um, the third area was how are library and staff performance evaluations? What's that process? There is a tension because the library board, as you know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But they give direction to the library director in terms of performance and goals. And yet, as an employee of the city, um, there are expectations for performance and goals, and so how does that fit together? What is the process for the communication that may need to occur between the employer and the board, for example, to make sure that. Um, that, uh, the feedback is being given and people are, um, being held accountable, uh, for the job in both ways. Um, and then just to think about with regard to that relationship, if there are other places that might be helpful. Some, um, cities do things like have an operating agreement, so they actually. Go through, this wouldn't be a council job, it would be something you might approve, right? Um, but just what are the processes and expectations, rules and responsibilities? How do you align what the library, um, board is doing with what your staff handbook says as managers? Right? So just making sure that there's some clarity, um, about that. Um, for me, I think the communication is almost as important. Because something else can now come up that you didn't think of, right? Um, but then what is it if something comes up that you didn't think of? And then all of these are things that are, you may or may not have in process, but I would recommend that, why not do them when things are looking? Right? It's a better time to do them. Um, and then to round it out, there were three other issues that were mentioned, signif- you know, enough times that I'll share them with you, but not as often. Um, one would be ensuring financial stability and transparency for the library board. Um, so just how does that, you know, concerns for, um, the library's reputation, if there's any need to. Make sure that, um, community members are comfortable with what's happening at the library, friends of the library being included. So what are the ways that you, um, the library is working on financial stability? Is there any need to reengage with staff? Um, address any morale issues or other relationship issues outside of the library? People mentioned things like townships and other supporters as well, so it's probably not for the council to do, but I'm rounding that out so that you know it. Uh, and then the last thing again is a library board, um, priority possibly, which would be. To look at what their, uh, strategy and vision are and re-up that so that it's clear. And that would be something. Obviously, they would want to share with the council as well. So it's all kind of, all the things to be preventative. Um, while, while now I know you have some new staffing, they've gone forward, so. But really it was, um, there were some stories we heard about how. Um, the community really was coming together to problem solve as opposed to letting some of the concerns people had. Kind of vary apart that were, um, I want to see more of it. I want to know what your secret sauce is. I'm going to be up here again to talk with you about how you did it, so. Be ready for that, so it's really a pleasure.
Any questions for the ladies? Do you have any documentation which you will send to the city regarding?
Uh, well, I did talk with, um, your city administrator about it, who now is aware of all of it, but. And just because, like I said, because this isn't scientific, I tend not to, I worry about it. Then it becomes a document, somebody can say and say, look what you found, and so, and to protect the confidentiality of people who's spent time with us.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we are actually between the Vigi and Alexandria for our loss control workshop, which by the way, it's twenty bucks. And I, there, I saw some of them today. It's a really good value if you want to go over to Alex's car. Um, so we are not going to stay with the whole meeting, we're gonna.
Yeah.
But appreciate you fitting us in on this trip.
Well, thank you for making the trip here. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Well, let's go down to item number eleven, rescue one truck replacement. We have fire chief Kat Hanson with us this evening. And there was information regarding this in our packet.
We were going to replace it next year, was the hopes we were going to propose and have it built from scratch. We thought a demo unit, but done. We would probably have it within, you know, ten weeks. And, um, if we were to kill it on this, we get it. We had one that we physically looked at. The price of it was for three hundred and twenty five thousand. It had sold the day before we looked at it. Is identical to that one with a different pump in it. Uh, the truck is for three hundred and fifty thousand, the truck itself. Other twenty five thousand would be for, uh, radios and the else excited. It's the ask is. For three hundred and seventy five thousand, the pool to make these payments. We currently have. sixty one thousand eight hundred eighty-two thousand in reserve. I had put sixty-two thousand down. Yes, thirteen thousand that's available this year. Next year, we only have fifteen thousand available. What would make that payment would be the sale of the old truck. As long as we get a minimum of fifty-five thousand or all of our payments will be covered. We're estimating to get between fifty to eighty-five thousand to our truck.
Danielle, do you have anything regarding this?
No. He, he figured it all out himself. I see he, he's got all the math all figured out for me, so.
It all looks usable and feasible?
Yeah.
Um, no red flags?
The loan payments is the only, I guess, partial rest that I, like um, that it felt through at the last budget meeting, the ones that are going hard budget to stay in the budget.
Yeah.
So in that loan of, what was it, forty-three thousand five hundred and forty gets paid off, then my fund is available. Is Lance on board?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Negative to say regarding. We have motion to implore this purchase second?
Second motion.
Motion, second discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the same, motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Where's it located?
Truck itself?
Yeah, gosh.
Uh, but small town going by the cities.
Oh, okay.
Fire safety is the company has uh, selling it, well, is the one that actually makes it.
Like before it's on?
Yes, they had two demo units available that that's pretty great, which was, it's three forty-three for the base model. We had the booster ring, which bumped it up a bit. It's not available, then the price jumps up. They will make a call tomorrow to get it done.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go to item number ten. Ordinance public nuisance, which is in your pocket, and the ordinance committee keeps met, meeting and rip some uh, put in some changes, revisions and our police chief, God Quainton, will answer any questions that you may have regarding this. I'll get anything you have. Cut it off. Would you like to press some mic for the audience?
Alright. So we looked at this briefly at the last meeting. The one change from what we suggested in your packet that I'm gonna say we need to uh, my recommendation is that we revert back to the original language. It was on page one. Um, right there in number one, where it says, where we were, we were suggesting a language change to add considerable number of members of the public. That is based on a recommendation by the League of Minnesota Cities. However, having had a conversation, um, having had input from the local um, Kreckelberg office and with Jeff Skoncian, our city prosecutor. He is however recommending that even though the league is recommending it, that we stick with the original language. He said the judges, he understands why, why the league is saying that he but he said our local judges aren't having a problem with the old format. And he is suggesting we stick with the old format because the new format actually could cause some more challenges. So he's like, let's stick with this and help the problem. So, other than that, there's not a lot of changes in the nuisance ordinance, as we kinda talked about. Uh, there's some small, just small ads. Uh, like where we, where we changed from clerk to city administrator. If you get out with us fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen on page three. Uh, that's where we had talked about in fourteen. We included vehicles that have obstructed license plates or license plates that I can't read. Um, which is basically, that's the only language that, that, that we're talking about for fourteen. And sixteen through eighteen are other uh, circumstances that the league's boilerplate had in them that we did not have covered. Like I said, there's that whole annoying vibrations thing that I don't have a great answer for. Um, but that's really the significant changes that we're talking about. Um, there's two places in here, I know one pays for, we're underneath a pavement. There's the paragraph that basically stipulates that there is nothing that stops the city from se- seeking remediation through the judicial process, so. No real significant changes to this one at this point.
Any questions from the council?
To be honest, I just wanna let the call from that piece of the license plate actually became kind of an issue last year for me that there was plenty of plates that I couldn't read and I couldn't tell if they were currently registered vehicles or not, and I can't go into their property to check that out, so. Um, that's actually why, that's probably the biggest change that's gonna impact us this year.
If there are no questions, we're looking for a motion to approve the ordinance changes. Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Anything else, Chief?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go to item number nine, S C H agreement for professional service to blue monitoring well, we can video packet. And uh, there are Lance wasn't here to speak about this, but uh, there are monitoring wells around the lagoon just to monitor, see if the lagoon is leaking. The loons are leaking into the soil, into the groundwater. And those wells were put in forty years ago. And they're, they're gonna need, we're not sure about the integrity of them all, even though they have been sampled. So S C H is proposing uh, to uh, come into an agreement with city that we would look into that because this is required by M P C A with our, our new permit to go, go ahead with this. And uh, this just includes their service work, it doesn't include there's one well that has to be replaced, but that doesn't include that at this point. And we're not sure if there's, if others will have to be rebuilt, rehabilitated or not. This is just a study that they want to uh, come into agreement with us about. That was in your packet. Danielle, did you have anything to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. Like I say, it's, it's in our, we shall our permit, we have, need to do it, but. So we're looking for a motion to uh, approve this agreement with S C H.
I'll make a motion to a agreement.
Okay, motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, going up to item number seven, uh, local board of appeal and equalization meeting, April tenth twenty twenty-five at two P M. Danielle, do you wanna speak to that?
I do.
That's just an F Y I.
Yep, so I just wanted to remind you, and probably maybe some of you have not even heard about it before. Potentially, um, the local board review is scheduled to be on April tenth at two P M here in council chambers. Um, I will need for sure either Brent or Kurt here, one or both of you are invited to come. Um, and then I do need a quorum. That is the time when people um, on your tax statement, or when people get their tax statement, it tells them that they are welcome to come and talk about the um, the estimated value that the assessor has put on their properties. And so the assessor will be here to talk to them uh, if, if people from the public come. And so we will sit here, sometimes people come, sometimes people don't. And so we sit here. Generally. It, it used to be an hour, but it's basically if people come, we sit here and talk to them, and then if nobody shows up, we can leave whenever. Yep. Yeah. So.
And I, can you tell, tell the consequences if we do not have a quorum?
If we do not have a quorum, we lose the ability to control it here in the city, and it goes to the county. So we wanna keep it here in the local.
So lake people? What do they have to do?
They have nothing to do with it. We just like to know what it is per foot on certain lakes, because it's always interesting. That's the, we, it just tends to, you know, after we find out everything in the city, and it just kinda tends to veer to different lakes in the area. And that's the only reason it tends to go that way. So.
Not a lot else to talk about.
It, it's nice that we don't have to be here for an hour like we do before.
Yeah.
So if everybody can make it, that'd be great.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's go to item number thirteen, Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center pay request number seventeen. Danielle, do you wanna speak to that?
I do. Wanna speak to that also. Um, we received a pay request number thirteen from Hammer's Construction in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. Um, it looks like there is still remaining on this contract six hundred and, or no, two hundred and sixty-one thousand and a hundred, a hundred and sixty-seven left on the contract, so um, they're not asking for all of the money that we sold them yet, so. Um, this has been approved and signed by the architect. And so it is ready for payment. If you guys approve it.
Any questions for Danielle?
Lance was on board.
Yep.
It was a totally good call, I see it up there.
I believe this is a pay request that should have been presented to us sooner, it wasn't.
Yeah, it looks like the invoice date was eleven twenty-one, twenty-four, or twenty-two, twenty-four, so.
Didn't get to us. We didn't have it, it didn't get to us in that time, so that was
Yeah.
The motion through, pay request number seventeen.
Again.
Motion second? Discussion? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry it. Um, item number twelve, just an F Y I downtown snow removal. Um, Brian could not be here, he's at another meeting, and Lance, of course, is gone. Um, with the, after our last snowfall, I know city hall had some probably could say complaints, and I did too, uh, regarding snow removal down the town. Even though we didn't get a lot of snow, it was uh, icy stuff that froze up. Um, the city does remove the snow on the shared use paths of the sidewalks, two inches or more. If, if there's less than that, it's up to the uh, property owner to remove it. The city does not remove the snow on the boulevard or the red concrete next to the curb. And that's, that red concrete is a boulevard for snow storage be- before they remove the snow. And uh, I talked to Brian and uh, it's intentionally, the goal of the city is to remove snow within forty-eight hours of a snowfall. Uh, and I'm not sure if that was done, I don't think that was done this time because of the can weather conditions, but it's also at the discretion, that's their goal, but it's at the discretion of the city. Uh, uh, superintendent or the city administrator to do that. And I know there was some complaints about people couldn't get from their vehicles to the sidewalk, but it's also the property owner's responsibility to shovel a path across the boulevard so the pedestrians or the shoppers can get from their vehicle to the stores. I just wanted to bring that up at this point because that was the latest and probably the next time we have a city council meeting, uh, hopefully the snow will be gone by that time. Any other comments regarding?
It was bad, I mean you watch people try to
Okay.
So.
I guess a question.
With Brian, because Brian was not a quality, could hear, that would be could address some of the questions.
Can I ask a question? So how do your businesses know this? Do you send out a letter letting them know that you've had issues?
Unwritten rule.
Yeah, but they know, okay.
I would say the way the D O T talked to us during the summers. They're the ones that dictate everything, and I'm thinking, well, they won't let us put anything out on the sidewalks. So why aren't they doing it?
They delegate have to.
Yeah, they expect the city to do it.
Well, I know that, that's a question we can address uh, when we start up our construction season for twenty twenty-five, hopefully that'll begin here within two, three weeks, and we'll have uh, weekly meetings with Minot and the contractor. So that's a, that's a question that could be brought forward then, even though there is no stone in the ground. Probably won't get the answer you want.
I decided this. Strange that they claim that they own it, yet they don't wanna take care of it.
On the topic of downtown snow removal, I just wanna let the council know that I'm hoping that we can have a conversation on snow removal in the city, and, and not trying to stir things up here. I know that the city has gone back and forth on snow removal, not just downtown, but on the streets in town, that I'm hoping we can revisit our practices on snow removal, because people parking on the streets causes for narrow streets.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I would like us to have a conversation on that.
Okay. Any other comments regarding that?
Just an observation, that pink side sidewalk is slippery. I don't know if anybody else noticed it.
That was, that was the ice.
Yeah, no, it's slippery earth.
I'm sorry.
It's slippery earth than the gray. Worth it.
Okay. Item number fourteen, mayor report, just a few items in the last couple of weeks. Um, attended Nordos meeting here at city hall on March twelfth, also uh, park workshop meeting where we showed the improvements proposed to share in part with the uh, asphalt infraction to the park, also had the parking uh, camping site and also the new bathtub. And that was, that was the, in the Pelican Rapids press, I believe, last week or the week before. Uh, ten, Pelican Rapids Fire Department Relief Association meeting at the fire hall with uh, Port Danielle, also uh, e-bike Zoom meeting uh, last week with uh, Jordan and um, ours our library director Marie, and also Mallory from our library director, Marie, and also Mallory from E D A, is E D C. E D C and also on the 19th of March, attended E D A meeting here at city of all. And then last Thursday, met with administrator Royson to plan the agenda for this afternoon of city council. Any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing other business or motion to adjourn? Second, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All the same, getting adjourned.